...night's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, May 20th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin with public comments. Are there any public comments from the Board?
My only comment is, you know, welcome to our two new members and looking forward to starting off this new year.
Thank you.
Nothing, nothing. Welcome. Thank you for volunteering and congratulations and yeah, looking forward to the new season, year, whatever we're gonna call it.
I also would like to congratulate both Brian and Glenn on winning their election and joining the Select Board, and I'd also like to congratulate everyone else that was on the ballot this past Saturday. I'd also would like to thank the Town Clerk and all the election volunteers for making that election possible as well. Any public comments from the public? All right, not seeing any on Zoom. We are going to move on to reorganization of the Select Board. So process-wise, how this is going to work, we are going to go through each of the three seats, so Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. For each one, I will ask if there are any nominations. A nomination will have to be made and seconded. Once I hear no more nominations, I'll close nominations. We will have discussion, if there is any, and then we will vote on each of the nominations in the order in which they were made. Any questions on that? All right, so let's start with Chair. I will now open it up for nominations for Chair.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Susan Ozolo for Chair.
Second.
All right, are there any other nominations for Chair? All right, hearing none, I will close nominations. Is there any discussion? All right, we will now vote. The first nomination is for me for Chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to Vice Chair. I will open it up to nominations for Vice Chair, and I will nominate Amanda Moore.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations for Vice Chair. Is there any discussion? All right, we will now vote on the nomination for Amanda Moore for Vice Chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. I will now open it up to nominations for Clerk.
I nominate Renee M. Key for Clerk.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, I will move on to discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote on the nomination for Renee M. Key for Clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, so I think we need to play musical chairs now.
Yes, Madam Clerk, when it comes time for the hearing.
Oh, yes, here's a public hearing notice.
I gotta work already.
You do, we have a public hearing tonight.
I'll stumble over my words when I have to read now.
All right, so we're gonna get in our correct seats, and we'll start right back up in not too long, but...
Yeah, almost like a stretch, yeah.
You guys are gonna have to get the name tags as well.
Name tags, too.
And then you guys, you can be an alpha.
There it is. That was.
Oh!
I got my seat.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right, I believe we are all in our seats now. We're settling back in, and we're going to resume with the meeting, moving on to announcements. And I do have a couple. I'm gonna pull them up. Tomorrow night is the Classic Cruise Night from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Memorial Drive down to T.C. Passios. It is hosted by the Lunenburg Community Food Pantry, Lions Club, PTO, and the Club Teen Center. It's a free event with music, food, games, and prizes, and there is a rain date. Hopefully, the weather works out, but the rain date will be the following Wednesday, May 28th. The annual Memorial Day Ceremony is going to be on Memorial Day next Monday, May 26th, at 10:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Park on Mass Ave. And there is one more Yard Waste Day. It's not this Saturday because of Memorial Day, so it's the following Saturday, the 31st, so if you still have yard waste, like I do, you have one more day to bring it down to the landfill. And one more, the Friends of the Library Book and Bake Sale is going to be on Saturday, June 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's gonna be open to all, and on the... On Friday, June 6th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., sorry, the day before that, there's going to be a special preview sale for members of the Friends, and anyone is eligible to pay the $25 annual membership to join the Friends and partake in the preview period. Several hundred people are currently members of the Friends of the Lunenburg Public Library, about 10 times as many in most towns. All proceeds go to the 501(c)(3) Friends of the Lunenburg Public Library, which gives the library $40,000 to $50,000, $40,000 to $50,000 each year. Dozens of volunteer bakers donate delicious baked goods, and the Friends have been collecting donated books since last fall, and we hope to see hundreds of people there. Any other announcements?
I do have announcement, Mr. Chairman. So on June 14th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., the Artisans of Hickory Hills will be holding a Symphony of Art auction. This is an auction which the proceeds will benefit both the Hickory Hills Lake Restoration and the Lunenburg High School Art Department, so that's a great event. At the... So the silent... The auction itself is June 14th from 2:00 to 5:00, but folks can go to the library from June 4th to June 13th, view the items. We have original paintings, photography, wood sculpture, jewelry, textiles, quilts, and more, so you can view that at the public library and submit bids from June 4th to June 13th, and then the final announcement will be on the 14th from 2:00 to 5:00.
Cool, thank you very much. All right, communications from other Boards. I'm not seeing anyone here. And scheduled meetings, we have a 7:10 p.m. public hearing for a special event license and one-day all-alcohol license for St. Boniface on June 22nd from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tim Murphy from St. Boniface and Tom Bodkin from St. Boniface.
Oh, my apologies. I have to ask the Clerk to read the public hearing notice.
Oh, okay. She knew it, she didn't realize she had to start.
I thought it was, but yeah. The Lunenburg Licensing Authority will hold a public hearing on May 20th, 2025, at 7:10 p.m. in the Town Hall, 17 Main Street, 2nd floor, Lunenburg, Massachusetts. On the application submitted by St. Boniface for a special event permit for the Sounds of Jubilee, 75-year Diamond Jubilee on June 22nd, 2025, from noon to 8:00 p.m.
All right, thank you. All right, back to you guys.
Thanks. Tim Murphy, Tom Bodkin, we're from St. Boniface. And imagine 75 years ago, right here, on that stage, is where St. Boniface had their first mass. And so 75 years later, we want to celebrate, have a jubilee, the Diamond Jubilee, to celebrate, you know, our beginnings.
He was an altar boy.
But I do hear from people, when I was talking to Lisa Normandin, when we got our permit for the tent, she said her mother remembers going to church here back in the day, so... So the idea is to have a big celebration. We have a huge tent that was gonna set in the back of the church, and we've invited all of the parishioners to come, free of charge. Now, you see on the brochure, it says that they're gonna be charged. And when we first started it, we thought, yeah, you know, everybody can pay a commensurate amount for getting a meal from Il Fornos and live music, but people didn't buy the tickets right away, and we started getting very nervous, so we decided last week it's gonna be free. People can make a freewill donation, we hope that they'll come, we just want to have a party, and we've set aside enough money to make sure that that can happen. So the event will be from noon to 8:00, and we have a number of musical guests that are coming. Most importantly, we have a musical group called the Mopai Sisters. They're a triplet, there were actually four of them that were born, one of them passed away, but there's three of them that are remaining triplets from Nairobi, Nigeria. And so when we were first putting the event together, we had a little difficulty finding enough musical groups that were gonna be attractive, and Father said that he knew of this group. Claire Nees, formerly Claire Garrity, that some of you may know, she reached out to them. Turns out that their business manager is from Pittsburgh, went to St. Burdett's, and so when we reached out to them, he went, "Oh, we'd love to do it." Gave us a fantastic price, so they will be here as the featured speakers, the featured musicians, so it's gonna be a wonderful event. It's gonna be catered, as I said, from Il Fornos, and we're very excited. So so far, now that we've decided tickets are free, tickets have skyrocketed, so now we have well over 200 people that are coming. We have the capacity to do as many as 400 people, it's a huge tent. I don't think we'll get to 400, but we do have the capacity to do that if it turns out to be that way. So we're excited, we got a one-day lic... We're asking for a one-day liquor license, just beer and wine. Tom Font knows a place to get all the beer and wine, he's good at that, he's done it before. And of course, we've been running Oktoberfest festivities at St. Boniface for a number of years now, so we kind of have a good sense of how to run these events. So just asking for your permission to have an event, and asking your permission to have a one-day liquor license for beer and wine.
And to the Town Manager is everything in the application, good?
It is.
All right, great. I will now open it up to questions from the Board, if there are any.
I don't have any questions. My usual question you already asked, because you know, I have everything in order, so I think, you know, you guys have done this once or twice, not this Jubilee, this is a great event.
It's a little different event, but yes, we've done it several times, yeah.
There's with alcohol, I guess what you're doing with that.
So I hope you have a successful event.
It looks like a great event. How do you feel about the parking?
So the parking, we have parking at the church. We've already got parking from Conrad's, so that should be the backup, first backup, and then we also have the parking, we have permission to park down at the funeral home. I spoke to the people that own it now, that are building there, and he said absolutely, you know, use it. I mean, they need a little goodwill down there, so they're hoping to garner a little goodwill by offering to let this park. I don't know that we'll need that parking, but we should be able to accommodate as many people as we could possibly have.
Good.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it up to the public. I do see quite a few people on Zoom. Does anyone on Zoom want to speak to the public hearing for this special event license? All right, I'm not seeing any, so to the Board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously, the public hearing is now closed.
You should note that Tom Bodkin's an attorney that didn't say a word, which is really odd.
Saving my best for last, Tim.
Okay, all right, you got something to say?
You don't have to, you don't have to be a parishioner.
Okay.
So, good point.
Great, yeah.
All are welcome, and as long as tickets last, and no negotiation on the price, though. We're at our bottom dollar.
So how do they get tickets?
How do you get tickets? So at each mass, last weekend and this coming weekend, we're handing them out to people at the door. So if that's one way that particularly Dad could make sure that he got a ticket, maybe he already did, if not, then you can contact the office. We may do it a third weekend, but if you contact the parish office, just show up, because we're not gonna sell out. I mean, we've got capacity.
Who knows now? Famous last words.
Well, I know, I know, but...
Get ahold of us, too. We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, let me know, okay? Dad knows how to get tickets.
It was more for...
Right.
Good luck, congratulations to all.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you for stepping up.
What a difference that we can make.
Yeah, really, thanks for stepping up.
We have to vote officially.
Oh, you gotta vote? They didn't vote.
Yeah, we haven't voted yet, sorry. I was just having a sideline with the Town Manager over here. Yeah, all right, is there a motion to approve the special event license and the all-alcohol license for...
So special event license for the Sounds of Jubilee on June 22nd from 12:00 to 8:00, and the one-day special license for beer and wine for the same date and time.
That's what I got.
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you much.
All right.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Yeah, it said all alcohol here, so, yeah. Okay, all right. Moving on to appointments, we have a couple. So we have the ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of Peter Schmidt as seasonal cemetery laborer.
So this is Peter's second summer returning, and I'm excited to have him back. He'll be here once school is completed.
Great, any questions for the Town Manager? Is there a motion to approve the Town Manager's appointment of Peter Schmidt as seasonal cemetery laborer?
Some moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of Andrea Mattson as seasonal lifeguard.
Do you want to do, Mr. Schmidt, this one?
Do you want to do both of them together? Okay. Andrea Mattson and Olivia Coronella as seasonal lifeguards.
So these are two new lifeguards, so this is exciting to get new people in, and this is, we're almost through. Appointments of all the summer help, we have one more lifeguard in the queue, but we're almost there.
Any questions?
Giving swim lessons, I thought I heard they are gonna...
That's the plan, they are, Parks Commission is planning to go forward with swim lessons. Yeah, there was a little concern about the water safety instructor, but that has been, that has been resolved.
Good, good.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to ratify the appointment of Andrea Mattson and Olivia Coronella as seasonal lifeguards.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. And we also want to acknowledge the resignation of Brandon Kibby from the Open Space Committee. Oh, did you have the letter or anything?
It's in the packet. Essentially, he just felt as though he couldn't give the time that he, he's love-serving, and he just can't give the time that he feels is needed at this point.
Right, so I want to thank Brandon for your time on the committee, and thank you for volunteering.
I think he served for quite a few years, 108, I believe, so thank you for his many years of service.
All right, and that's it for appointments, and up next is the Town Manager Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two grant-like announcements tonight. Excuse me, the first is that we have been awarded $99,335 through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund program, which is funded through the Mass Clean Water Trust. These funds will be coupled with a local match of $59,565 to fund the asset management, inventory, and planning of our stormwater systems. So this is an extension of work that we, that we have completed under a grant that we received in fiscal year '23, where we did asset management of the stormwater system and set up a framework to track the inspections that we need to do under the MS4 permit. So this funding will be used to continue analyzing the assets that we have, documenting their conditions, and providing a web-based analysis of the stormwater system. So this is all work that I'm sure Member M. Key has heard a lot about, but in compliance with the MS4 permitting and stormwater requirements that we are pursuing, and I thank the DPW Director for continuing to go after these funds. The next item is that the Cultural Council has been awarded $9,200 for this year. I have emailed the Chair of the Council to schedule a meeting so that I can understand the Council's local priorities and also assist in advertising when they are getting their grants out. I'm not sure how we've done it in the past, but sometimes Cultural Councils just need a little help letting people know that they have funds, and if you have a project, they can be funded if it meets the local, the local priorities. Reminder, tomorrow, the Munis Financial System will be undergoing a scheduled upgrade as we migrate to the cloud, so online financial transactions will be available during this time, but there will be no in-person financial transactions tomorrow at Town Hall. Services should resume as normal on Tuesday, and messaging has been put out on the website and social media.
So tomorrow and Thursday?
I'm sorry, tomorrow is only Wednesday. It is only on Thursday. It is Thursday, not tomorrow. So there's one more day if you'd like to pay in person.
And Friday?
Well, Friday, we're closed.
We're closed, but it's still, okay.
It will be migrating still on Friday, right? So with the election coming to a conclusion and upcoming appointed terms coming to a conclusion, we're working with our IT vendor to wind down existing email accounts and to create new accounts for folks, and we will also be updating the website accordingly. This is a process, we have only so many licenses, and we need to take the licenses from some, store their information, and re-portion it, or reallocate it to another user, and we're doing this priority-based and also as, as Boards are meeting and whatnot. So it's a process, and we're not doing it before people are sworn in either. So next is that we are beginning to start the process of getting all of the Select Board licensing onto OpenGov. I have a meeting next week with Brian Gingras, who's gonna be helping with that process, and so the plan is to have all of our licensing fully online by the fall renewal season, so...
That is fantastic.
I know, that is so exciting.
It is so exciting.
Well, that, sorry, can I ask a question before you move to the next thing? Will that include updating our forms and everything that we have, or is that gonna be secondary or...
Well, the forms become embedded as like a web form.
Right.
So it's, right, so it's, we're not updating the whole thing.
Yeah.
So no old, like, documents that look like they've been scanned and photocopied and...
Several times over, yeah. Great.
Very exciting. And hopefully, I mean, we have, a lot of our businesses are local, but there's, you know, we have corporate entities that have a franchise here in town, and that can be exceedingly difficult for them when they have to come in and renew their licenses through the paper process, so. All right, project updates. The work on Ritter Roof is going as anticipated. The slate has been completed, as I reported last week, and they're really working on the trim now, but there's no surprises so far. Okay. And we are starting to plan for the partial decommissioning of the T.C. Passios building. So Facilities Director Chris Ruth is spearheading these efforts. Department Heads, if you're watching this, you're getting a highlight at what's at the meeting next week. Department Heads are going to be given the target of June 30th to purge all their old files, anything that can be purged, get rid of it, and then to label and organize what will be retained, because all of that is moving, those four rooms of files have to move out of that old section. The School Department will be vacating the building over the summer months. Then, after that occurs, the rooms that PAC will be going into, their electrical system needs to be upgraded for their needs, that will be done, and then Chris is setting up the other shutdown of the electrical system in the portion of the building that will be decommissioned, shutting down the water, the sprinkler system, and installing a firewall and door, firewall and fire door. The goal is to complete the decommissioning of that portion of the building prior to the heating season.
Where is PAC moving to? Where's their new room?
Well, this, so school's moving.
Right.
All the, so he showed me the diagram, it's in, they viewed and they picked a couple of rooms, and there's two rooms that they have picked that...
Don't have any water yet, or...
Like water leaking?
Yeah.
No. No.
I said yet.
She did.
Well, the other, about T.C. Passios, and you bringing this up, this is something that we discussed a little bit during kind of the capital planning process and a little bit in the budget, but there was funding, I don't think I discussed it with this Board, so there was funding at previous, at the Fall Special Town Meeting for repairs to T.C. Passios roof, and that was very specifically for the portion of the building that we're decommissioning. So you can anticipate to see a future warrant article that's brought to the Town Meeting to move those funds to the portion of the building that remains.
It was clearly identified in the article?
It was very clearly identified, and in the presentation made at Town Meeting, it was very clearly identified that it was for that portion of the building, so... So in, in full transparency to voters, we'll bring it back for another vote, but, so there's funding there for roof repair, if voters approve it to be moved.
It was like $300,000?
Yeah, yes.
Over three, yeah, okay. What, Town Meeting, was that approved at? I don't...
I think the Fall Special.
Yeah.
I thought it was even...
Further?
I thought it was when Heather was still here, originally.
Maybe, I don't know, we'd have to look, but...
I thought it was the Fall Special, but...
Yeah.
Regardless.
Regardless. So that, that's the goal, is to shore up that part of the building, that there's potential long-term use of that part of the building.
And putting in a firewall is enough, I mean, I know nothing about fire safety, but that's enough, according to code and everything else, to decommission the building?
Yep.
To turn the sprinkler systems off and everything?
Sprinkler systems and all the electric, and Chris has been working closely with the Fire Chief to understand all of what the requirements will be.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is a absolutely coordinated effort. Anything else on TCP? Okay, so there's gonna be a lot of movement over there. There's a lot of moving around, there's a lot of designs for what we could do with the space. We're trying to do the core movements first, and then let's see where the dust settles.
Once you have that done, you know, where the movements are gonna be, can we have some sort of a diagram?
Sure.
Have something brought forward so that we can, we can see it, but also show the people, you know, what's, what it's gonna look like?
Right.
What it is now, and what it's gonna look like?
Sure.
Yeah, good idea.
And we had funding from Prior Capital for Wallace Park Courts resurfacing. The Facilities Director is preparing that scope of services now so that we can get that bid out. We're hoping to get that project completed before the fall so that we can do it this year, otherwise we can't do resurfacing in, once the weather gets cold. And lastly, for project updates, the Assistant Town Manager is starting to work with Department Heads now, who had capital projects approved at the annual Town Meeting in getting ready for when we can go out to bid. So the goal here is to be proactive, that we're ready to hit the street on July 1st for as many bids as possible, and hopefully be a little bit ahead of others who also just went through the Town Meeting and have projects hitting the street, right? So that is up, that is the update on projects. Recruitment, we have the Administrative Assistant for Planning, that's Logan's position, 36 hours per week, that's posted, applications are starting to come in. Anticipated start date for that position is July 1st. We held interviews yesterday for the 10-hour-a-week conservation position.
That's good.
And I believe we will be checking references this week and sending out an offer if the references are good. Recording clerk and secretaries for various boards and committees, we have a whole host of folks scheduled for interviews for a number of different boards and committees that need recording clerks. When we, when we interview people this week for this position, there is a small amount of money and a small amount of time, and specifically in the Select Board budget due to the vacancy that we have there, that I'm gonna see if folks are interested in working, in addition to this more permanent recording clerk position, working on a contractual basis to assist the Select Board in catching up on some of our minutes, paying by the set of minutes, not by, not as a, on a contract, as a 1099 employee to do, or 1099 vendor to do minutes. If they have interest in doing both, that's great. We only have a small window to do it, because we, we only have until June 30. That position is gonna be filled out on July 1st, so...
That would be great.
So if anybody's listening, wants to do sets of minutes temporarily...
Please do.
Please submit an application. Dietary aid is posted at nine hours per week, and applications are starting to come in for that position. Okay, land use director position, this has not been posted. Here's why. So the way that this position is currently configured is that this individual is primarily a planner and director of economic development, who also has oversight over all other land who also has oversight over all other land use functions, over the Building Commissioner, over Conservation, and, well, Planner and ZBA typically go together, but really over Conservation and Building Commissioner. That is not, it's not that it doesn't occur, that that setup does occur, it's not typical. Um, and so, we have had some internal discussions about how that position may look, before we take it out, and we're going to continue those discussions, bringing the Chair with the Planning Board into them this week. Um, the thought is that folks who are really interested in planning and economic development are not typically the folks that are overseeing these other departments. They're really doing the planning and the economic development and supervising whatever their staff is, of course, interfacing with the other departments. It's a little odd to not have a direct line between the Building Commissioner and the Town Manager or Town Administrator. There's usually not anybody in between there. Um, I don't necessarily see why there would need to be. And, so, that's what we are kind of discussing. I want to put this out in a way that we are attractive. This is potentially a difficult position to fill. It was a difficult position to fill in the, in the past, especially where we are one of the fastest-growing communities in the Commonwealth. I don't think that it would be in Lunenburg's best interest to get somebody who is inexperienced in this area. So I want to make sure that we have the right job description to attract the right person for what Lunenburg's needs are. So more to come. It's going to take a couple wa, a couple weeks before we get there. So what are we doing in the interim? So, Matt Brenner has been wonderful as Planning Board Chair, sitting over there, um, every day, pretty much. Um, as I understand, that's going to be coming to an end soon. Uh, we had a couple of leads on interim planners. Those have not panned out. There is one more lead that Matt is exploring for an interim planner. If that lead doesn't work out, we're going to post for an interim. And whether it's a contract person, or however that looks, is however that looks, but post an interim to get us through. Any questions on that?
Do we have to post for an interim?
No.
If we're going to get an interim, we don't have?
Not necessarily, no. Depends on how much, if they're working, if they're working not as an employee, as, as a vendor on a 1099 contract.
Okay.
I have a question. How does this work, this is an SAP position?
Uh-huh.
We don't have a Personnel Committee.
Yep.
So how does that work if we have, if you're going to change the job description? Are you going to be looking at changing the pay rate at all, or does that have to be accepted?
Well, so, so probably the pay rate would fall outside of SAP, under the provision of the SAP, that the position could be contracted.
Okay.
I would imagine that this position could be contracted.
Okay.
Um, in terms of changing the job description, I believe, uh, that in the absence of a Personnel Board, that just lands with the Town Manager.
Yep. Okay.
So, there's a lot of dialogue. We, uh, during our first conversation, we were kind of all going in different directions, and then we broke and we said, "Let's come back to this." So now we're going to bring Matt into that kind of discussion and see where we come to.
And did you say that Matt's been in the office helping out, is that?
I said that Matt has not only been in the office helping out, he has been in the office helping out every single day.
Okay, well, I didn't know that was happening, so thank you, Mr. Brenner, for stepping in and helping that way. Um, that's just great to hear, so thank you, Matt.
He has been an absolute godsend, and he is wonderful to work with, and he has really, but the, the whole team in the Ritter Building has been keeping the wheels on the bus, and everybody has really been, like, just totally supporting one another and showing up and helping as they can, and I really appreciate that, so... Um, and then Seasonal Lifeguards, we have one candidate that's still in process. So that's it for recruitment. Alright, Board and Committee Vacancies. So, the Select Board policy is that folks had until the fifteenth to reapply, if they were interested in continuing to serve, or to submit their applications.
Mm-hmm.
I am chasing a couple people to, to see if they, um, really are not interested. I haven't heard back from, and it's coming back a little mixed in that area. Um, but I do have several boards, we've received applications from new people, which is wonderful, who are interested in joining, but I do have several boards that nobody submitted applications for.
Okay.
So, I didn't know if the Board wanted to extend the May fifteenth deadline out to May thirtieth, and kind of do one more, let me look through and see who I really have nobody for, for the vacancies, and specifically target those, one more sweep of getting volunteers. What is the Board's thoughts?
I think we definitely should do that. Um, we have until the first and second week of June, until we make these reappointments, so if we are doing any last-ditch effort to recruit people and see if, you know, maybe there are people who would like to be reappointed that we just haven't gotten in touch with, or if we can try to identify even more people to, uh, sign up, then we definitely should. And it sounds like we need to, so...
Yeah, if we can get it shared on social media, too, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, we have been.
Yeah, it's been, it, uh, they're, they seem to be coming in a little bit from everywhere. So, some are coming in in hand, and they're folks that definitely are word of mouth, and some are coming in online. So I would imagine those are maybe social media?
Do you think we have time and/or the budget to put an ad in the ledger?
Oh, we definitely have the budget.
Yeah.
Do we have the time, so today's?
I forget when, I forget when the...
Next Tuesday.
Usually Tuesday.
I think one thing that we could probably do is maybe, like, a little more of like a personalized Facebook post to the groups. Um, so like, I could, like, share, for example, or someone on the Board could share, uh, one of the town Facebook page, uh, post that has all the vacancies and, kind of like a personal...
Individual members sharing the post that's already there and...
We can try it. What do you guys think? Do you think that'll maybe get a little more interest?
It can hurt, but, but not everyone's on Facebook, so I don't want to rely just...
I know.
I thought, and I think maybe this is what Town Manager was just thinking you were going, like, maybe if there is a Board that you've identified that we don't have any, maybe we can do something like, "Hey, join the..."
This is what the XYZ Committee does.
Maybe that kind of, yeah, target, if we have time.
Do you have, do you know which ones those are? Do you feel comfortable sharing them now?
I know at least, uh, hold on one second. Give me a sec. I know Concom, for sure. I have not seen any applications for the Conservation Commission, and they have a couple vacancies.
Are they going to be able to?
Do they have quorum?
They have a quorum.
Mm-hmm.
But just a quorum, pretty much, yeah.
And maybe we can use PAC to get the word out, too?
Oh.
Just heard a yes from, thank you.
Where is that, uh, I'm just looking for that volunteer.
I'm trying to think, I mean, I was going to say the ledger, that's another one, right?
Yeah, because I just read just some people that's not on social media.
Yeah.
I think between the ledger and Facebook, we get, you know, all the people who would probably be interested.
I actually, somebody is watching this meeting, emailing me right now about a committee assignment. It just came through.
Good, keep it, really, keep talking about it.
Literally.
I saw that, that's funny.
Um, so, I know Conservation Commission...
Even just having an ad on Channel 8 or whatever, you know?
Yeah, like, on the scroll.
Yeah, on the scroll, yeah. Doesn't have to be a live, uh, show.
Cultural Council, there's two, there's two terms that are expiring that I haven't heard back from either member. I did email them again and the Chair, so that's, there's a potential there that if those folks aren't interested, that those are also two vacancies. It's really Concom that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, yeah, I figured that was it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sewer, we're better if things go well.
Yeah, so, we are going to be meeting on Thursday to appoint, I think, two people now. Is that confirmed?
Yeah, if, if, that's the will of the Board, yes. There are potential two candidates, yes.
Okay, which is good.
Yes.
Very good. So, at least they'll have a quorum for their next meeting.
They'll have a quorum. One is, uh, an individual for the Sewer Commission that was, their term was expiring, and they're planning to move out of state, and so, or out of town, and, um, so they're willing to continue on, just to help with the quorum until they actually move.
Right.
Okay.
And the other is a new person. So, we're to come on those on Thursday.
Yes. But I'm glad that that worked out, though, especially after this election and, you know, failing to elect. I was kind of hopeful, because I saw that there was a good amount of write-ins. I was hoping that, um, we would be, we would be able to elect someone through the write-ins, but...
There's also a failure to elect on the Board of Assessors.
Yes.
They just don't have the same quorum issue. So there is a failure to elect on Board of Assessors. So, the Select Board and Board of Assessors can follow a similar process, if there's folks that are interested in meeting jointly, to appoint somebody to that position as well. So, so there are those elected positions also, that normally you would have to be elected, but if you're interested in serving on the Sewer Commission or the Board of Assessors in an appointed capacity, there is a path forward for those as well.
Right, yeah.
The, the Planning Board has an open spot.
Oh, yes.
Well, oh, yes.
Alright, any other questions for the Town Manager? Okay, thank you very much, Jen.
Thank you.
Alright, we're moving on to old, uh, new business, excuse me. So first, we have review letter of support for the establishment of a Chapter Seventy Commission to review the foundation budget and local contribution formulas. So there is a bill that is currently with the Joint Committee on Education, and all it's doing is establishing a commission, right? It's establishing a commission to really look into Chapter Seventy. I read through it, I think it sounds pretty comprehensive, um, but I think it's the important first step to actually changing Chapter Seventy, and I really do think that all this advocacy that has been going on has been helpful.
Is it in the drive?
I am just realizing it's not. I saw your reaction.
It is not.
Let me drop it in real quick. Um, but yeah, that's the context for it. Um, hold on one second.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to put this in. Okay, I just added it. So you'll see it there now, Chapter Seventy Letter of Support. And I believe the School Committee is going to be writing something as well, so it's just going to be submitted as written testimony. Um, but I'll go ahead and read it. So it's addressed to Senator Lewis, Representative Gordon, and members of the Joint Committee on Education. "We, the Lunenburg Select Board, write in strong support of Senate Bill 400, an act to ensure adequate and equitable funding for public education. Massachusetts has long prided itself on being a national leader in public education. This is reflected in the Massachusetts Constitution, which has guaranteed every child in the Commonwealth the right to high-quality public education since seventeen eighty. The current reality, however, is that many municipalities like ours are making devastating cuts, because the Chapter Seventy formula and the underlying foundation budget no longer reflect the realities of modern education, such as special education or school transportation, or take into account the fiscal constraints that municipalities are subjected to, such as inflation and Prop Two and a Half. The Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court has ruled that it is the responsibility of the Commonwealth to ensure the constitutional right to adequate public education is provided. However, due to states in action and structural flaws in the Chapter Seventy formulas, this responsibility has largely fallen on municipalities to bear. As a result, the quality of public education in the Commonwealth is at risk. S-400 is a critical step, is a critical first step in addressing these issues. The foundation budget needs to be updated to include the various requirements of education in the twenty-first century. To reduce the burden placed on municipalities, the inflation cap needs to be removed, and a local contribution cap needs to be lowered. It is time for the Legislature to act with urgency to modernize Chapter Seventy. We implore the Committee to ensure the recommendations of the Commission, improve funding for public education as much as possible, and additionally, to ensure that they are enacted as soon as possible." What do you guys think?
I have one, just super nitpicky, as I'm still reading my stuff again, but can, paragraph two, can it be proposition instead of Prop Two and a Half?
Oh, sure.
That's just, I told you, really nitpicky.
I thought about that, too, and I was like, yeah.
Paragraph two is one sentence. That is a very long sentence.
Prop, is it a run-on sentence?
I don't know, it's the whole, it's, um, but the last one, I think you're miss, it's missing commas in between, like, "ensure recommendations, commission, improve funding", wait, "to ensure the, improve funding for public, as much as possible." Maybe it's just the, the pace, it sounded like it was a list, but...
Yeah, it might have just been how I read it. Um, where are you again? Can you say it again?
Just the last sentence.
The last sentence, "we implore"?
Yeah, "we implore the Committee to..."
Brian, I'm curious if you have thoughts coming from the School Committee.
Oh, it is, yeah. I mean, I...
I think it's important to continue to advocate for the, the Chapter Seventy funding formula to change, because it isn't working, and I think this is a, a good step. I think, yeah, it involves all the stakeholders of the town, but also getting other towns involved in doing it, too. It can't be just us.
Right.
Sure.
Do we know that the changes that need to be done are the removal of the inflation cap and lowering the local contribution cap? I don't know enough about the Chapter Seventy formula to know what needs to be changed, other than everything.
I think those two are really...
Sadly, I think the politicians don't know how to change the Chapter Seventy formula either.
So I brought up these three things, because I think it's really important, right? There's the foundation budget, which obviously needs to be modernized, right? Can I speak to the details of that? No, I really can't. Um, the inflation cap needs to be removed. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. And the other thing is that the local contribution cap, if you didn't know this, it's like eighty-two point five percent, right? So...
I did not know.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of absurd, right? So I think that needs to be lowered, too. Those are just things that stand out to me. Those were, um, pretty top in the list of things that were mentioned in the bill to actually charge this Commission with looking into. Um, maybe that sort of, you know, speaks to the importance, I don't know. Um, but I'm open to suggestions, too, if we want to include other things that, you know, maybe we want to state that Chapter Seventy should change.
Do we have a time that this has to get sent? Can we wait?
Um, I don't know what the public hearing schedule is.
Give me a second, I'll...
Yeah.
Because if not, I think this is great, and I really appreciate you putting it through, but if we have the time, I wouldn't mind...
Looking into it more.
Just looking into the, to the bill to see if there's anything else we wanted to add, but otherwise...
Sure.
Yeah, if these things are called out specifically in the bill, I think it's good to...
Yeah. And I would, I mean, I'm working with a limited understanding of Chapter Seventy, too, but I am slowly learning more as I draft more of these letters and do research for them.
Yeah.
Um, I think those are, like, kind of the key things that need to be addressed, right?
Yeah. Alright, so the hearing, Senate Bill 400?
Yeah.
Yeah.
An act create, no, that's not it.
It must be a House bill.
It's Senate.
Yes.
I actually have that page up. I didn't know what you were looking for, but I have it up now. Would you want to look at this?
This.
Hearing, um, so they just had one, yeah. And it, we were informed, though, that it's totally okay to still submit written testimony.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if they already had it, we probably should send it sooner than later, I would just, I would think?
I would think so. I don't know if they have more.
So I'm, I'm comfortable with it as is.
Okay.
Personally.
The process is, you want to get it in now, because they're going to vote before it goes. It'll either live in this committee and die in this committee, or they'll vote it affirmatively out of committee, and it bounces to the next committee that it has to go to.
Okay, so do we want to vote on this tonight with, um...
Yeah, I, I think what's, the, the last sentence, see what everyone thinks. "We implore the Committee to ensure that the recommendations of the Commission..."
Hold on, now I can't find the document. Okay. Yeah, I see what you're saying. It is one sentence.
No, 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 but it's...
The last sentence, the bottom.
Ensure that the recommendations of the Commission...
Improve funding for public...
Ensure that the recommendations.
To ensure, oh, that.
Is that?
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then, maybe after possible, before and, comma, and? Would that make it flow better?
"To ensure that the recommendation of the Commission, improve funding for public education as much as possible, comma, and additional, and additionally to ensure..."
Isn't that how it's supposed to be, or am I...
So you're getting to the last thing that I was getting.
Yeah, you are.
I felt like, but...
Yeah. I added a comma.
Yeah, I don't...
It does break it up, so I think it makes it a little better. Okay.
Yeah. I don't think it needs a comma there.
Alright, let me, let me think. What do, what do we do here?
It's an and, I, I don't know, comma, I mean...
I thought comma and, and that...
With, when you have, like, three things.
Three things, yeah.
That's the Oxford comma you're saying.
Right.
So maybe to add around.
No, it's okay. It's still, it still makes it a little easier to read. So I changed Prop Two and a Half to Proposition Two and a Half. I added "that" after the word "ensure" in the last paragraph, and then I added a comma after, um, "improve funding for public education as much as possible, comma, and additionally." Anything else? Alright, great. We don't really need to vote on it. I think we can just print it out and sign it, right? Or do you want us, do you think we should vote?
Yep.
Yeah, we should vote. Most of the time, we vote on these things anyway. Is there a motion to, um, approve the letter of support for S-400 as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. So, um, could probably print it out and, oh, look at that. Wow. Wow, right when I said that, I heard the printer go off. Alright.
I think, this says seventeen May, not Seventeen Main Street. I don't know how it's going to print out.
No, I think it's just the formatting of this document. We'll have to make sure it looks right.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, did, went, the street went over the logo.
Yeah.
Oh, mine's...
It doesn't look like that on mine. Mine looks normal.
Okay, good.
We might just need to, yeah.
I think it has...
It's a Mac thing.
I think we got it, guys. It's alright. Alright, so we'll move on now. What's next? Oh, "vote to delegate the Select Board's non-criminal disposition enforcement authority of Chapter 232, unregistered vehicles, to the Building Commissioner." And Jen, I will have you introduce this.
Wonderful. So our bylaws in Chapter 232 speak to unregistered motor vehicles, and that no person in the town may keep more than one unregistered motor vehicle unless they obtain a special permit through the Select Board. So I'm not asking the Select Board to change anything about, specifically about Chapter 232. However, in our bylaws, in an earlier section under Section 1-3 about noncriminal disposition, there's a overall section that talks about the enforcement authority, and that's in your folder. So the enforcement authority under the bylaws, under various sections, and so this one, the enforcement authority, is the Select Board. So what does that mean? So basically, as it stands now, if there's a complaint that comes in, or somebody notices that there's more than one unregistered vehicle, there's, if we want to do anything about that, and I want to say first, in my opinion, the goal of enforcement is always compliance, right? So we want to get people to come in to compliance with the bylaw. It's not about ticketing folks or raising revenue. It's really about getting down to only one unregistered car, okay? So that's, that's the kind of philosophy that I think folks approach enforcement with in general. However, sometimes you cannot achieve compliance, and sometimes you have to start issuing tickets. So the noncriminal disposition section of the town's bylaw is what allows us to issue tickets under various sections. So as this stands now, the Select Board, if there was a complaint about unregistered motor vehicles, you would have to investigate the complaint. You would have to meet as a board to decide what to do. You would have to meet as a board to decide whether or not to issue tickets, and you would be issuing tickets. And sometimes, not always, but occasionally, these cases don't resolve. You don't get the compliance, and we're in the district court asking the court for compliance. In my opinion, and in the Building Commissioner's opinion, this better lives under the Building Commissioner. So we, rather than change the whole bylaw, the Select Board could, tonight, delegate their authority under the bylaw to the Building Commissioner at any point in the future. This Select Board or another Select Board could unring that bell, take that back with just a vote of this board. So the Building Commissioner and I have talked. He has done this in other communities. He believes that this is where this should live. We actually have a complaint right now, which is why this is happening.
I was like, why is that coincidence?
And so when I had the, when the complaint came in, it's like, okay, so what do we do with it? And, oh, it's the Select Board. Okay, that's not going to probably be great.
Right. I'm fully supportive of this. I don't think it's appropriate or proper for the Select Board to be discussing or voting to fine or penalize our constituents in any way in a meeting. It just is not something I want to do. I don't think we should be doing it, so I would actually really prefer for this to be delegated to Brian, the Building Commissioner. I think it makes a lot more sense.
I agree. Would it look like the one right above, or two above that, where it says DPW Director or Designated Agent? Would it say Select Board or Designated Agent, or would it say--
So we're not changing the bylaw, right? Because that, that's in the bylaw. So you can only change that at town meeting.
Right.
You, by a vote of this board, you're delegating the authority that's vested in you--
And we can do that.
--through the bylaw to another individual.
Okay.
And you can take it back.
Yeah. I mean, I think it makes more sense. I'm comfortable doing it, and like the town manager said, if we ever want to take it back for whatever reason, we can.
And I think more permanently to that point, we have the bylaw review committee.
We real--
I would say that this section of the bylaw is ripe for review.
Yeah.
I think the Select, there's one other thing that the Select Board is enforcing on--
There's three. Boats and boating--
Yeah, boats.
And recreational vehicles.
The boats. Yeah.
We're not doing that. Let's just be real. So, all right. So what do you guys think? Anyone opposed to this? Do we want more time to think about it?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah?
I'm fine with it.
All right. Is there a motion, then, to delegate the Select Board's noncriminal disposition enforcement authority of Chapter 232, unregistered vehicles, to the Building Commissioner?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Up next, we have a vote to declare surplus property, and this is for some furnishings in the Adult Activity Center. Jen, do you just want to speak to what it means to declare something surplus property for the board and the public?
Sure. So under the, under the state procurement laws, which mostly deal with about how we're getting things, it also deals with how we get rid of things. So for future discussion, we could have a conversation about property of a de minimis value, not having to go through a formal vote of the Select Board, but we, but we don't have that.
Right.
So in order to, to get rid of anything, the formal process to get rid of it, even if, if we're throwing it in, if it has no value and it's junk value only, is that the Select Board has to vote to declare it surplus. So Deb Goodsell at the Adult Activity Center has sent over an email that is, shows--
Many chairs.
Many chairs.
Yeah, it's mostly chairs, and I think there was like one bench.
There's a wooden bench, and there's also one upright piano.
Oh, I didn't even see that the first time I looked.
That's the only one that she's, oh--
Is it the only piano in the, I can't remember.
Um, I want to say there's another one.
Is it? Is there?
Is there a black--
I think there's a organ.
I don't, I don't know. I don't want to speak out of place here, but I feel like there is. I feel like there's another one in there.
Oh, there's a grand piano in there.
Yeah.
There's a grand piano in there.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Oh, right. There is a grand piano.
Okay.
Right when you walk in. So this is the one that's in the kitchen?
Yeah. Or not the kitchen, but it's in the--
No, it's right next to the grand piano, I think. Isn't it?
Or in the, in the other room.
The function, whatever that--
Yeah. It's in the back of that function room.
So, um, so I would be looking for the board to declare the surplus. Some of these other departments may pick up. Some of these might end up on municipal. More likely is that these are going, these are headed to municipal, where they'll be auctioned for whatever that yields. So if the board was so inclined to authorize that the items detailed in the May 6, 2025 email from the Adult Activities Director, Deb Goodsell, as surplus, that would be great.
Any questions? I think it's pretty straightforward, right? All right. Is there, is there a motion to declare all of the various items listed in this email from the Council on Aging Director as surplus property?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. What do we have up next? Select Board Liaison and Committee Assignments. Okay. So Brian and Glenn, both of you have been on boards before, so I think you're probably familiar with how our liaisons work. Pretty much, you just become the point person for the Select Board for any given board or committee. The expectation isn't that you attend every meeting, although you certainly can if you want to. If you want to speak to the chair and get updates that way for what is going on with that board and committee, you can do that as well. But it's really for a couple reasons, right? You're the person for the Select Board that sort of has that relationship with the board and committee to foster that communication, and also to give committee reports, which I've learned are actually very helpful when we make committee reports at Select Board meetings. So that's essentially what a liaison is. I don't know if you guys have any questions just about that? Okay. So there's a spreadsheet in here that has all of them. What we normally do is go through one by one and just see who is interested. Anyone can express interest, and we just sort of talk through it. And it would be nice if we could go through. Sometimes it takes a couple of meetings to get all of these, but if we really could like make sure that at least Michael Ray and Tom's are sort of replaced, that would be good. So we can just go through it and do a first pass. So the first is the Agricultural Commission. Does anyone want to be the liaison for the AgCom?
Do we know when they meet?
I was just gonna say, I guess if we had like--
Sure. They meet on, I'm pretty sure it's like every third Thursday. Let me look. Yeah, every third Thursday of the month. I got that right. In the Ritter Building.
We actually meet on Mondays now.
Oh, you meet on Mondays now? Oh, well, we need to update that.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Miss Duffy over there answering the question. Thank you.
Are the meetings in the evening?
They are.
Yes.
6:30 or 7:00 usually.
We should add a column to the spreadsheet.
Yeah, actually, I really like that idea. That's a really good idea. When they meet?
I was also looking at, you know, the ones that you're actually a member, I feel like require more of a lift oftentimes than the ones that you're not. Not all the time.
Yeah.
But that can be important. You know, like Capital Planning Committee, that was, you know, historically, Mr. Alonso. That one, that's, that's a lift.
Especially--
That's not watching meetings. That's, that's being in attendance.
It's being engaged in them.
I just want to jump in on that, too. I know on the school committee's designee to capital planning, there is a request that the member who was in that seat continues in that seat, and that there is precedent for that, that it can be a designee. So just kind of in general, but it made me, capital planning made me think of this. These don't have to be just the five of you. These can be people that you are appointing on your behalf.
Yeah.
So we're going to leave Tom on there, then?
Sold.
That's what I'm saying.
Sold.
Well, I mean, I think we should do that judiciously. Like, I wouldn't say that for anyone, and that Tom has never expressed interest in doing that, so I don't think I would-- Was that just an example?
So that was Renee's example of leaving Tom on there, but he was specifically coming up there because Peter Beenhauer has expressed an interest--
I see.
--that he continues on the capital planning.
I'm, I'm good with. But is that for the school committee to just--
It is.
It is.
I was just using that as an idea, because it may come in to other appointments.
Right. It may. Yeah, I know, and we'll get there.
Good to know.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, maybe make a suggestion? Instead of going down the list, could we maybe go through the ones that we know? Like, I have an interest in keeping master plans during committee because I've been involved, trying really hard to get that moving. Maybe if there's ones that we specifically have an interest in, maybe go in that and then see what's left?
Okay. So do you want to have members express interest in the ones that they would like to keep? I also really want to like make sure that we replace, you know, Tom and Michael Ray here as well. But, okay. Well, Amanda, which ones, you mentioned Master Plan Steering Committee. I expected that you wanted to keep that. Let's see. What else are you on here for? Economic Development Committee?
Well, we don't have to go through all of mine. I mean, I only have, I only have two right now.
Yeah.
I just was, I don't know. It's kind, I don't, I don't want to volunteer for, you know, four other ones as we go down the list, and then feel like I don't have enough capacity to actually give what I would need to give to the committees is all I was--
Okay.
Like, I'd love to be able to say I want to do AgCom, but I'm not sure that I have--
Another idea, too, we've done this at the school committee level, is have two columns. You could have the 20, 2024 member and then the 2025 member on another column, just so we, as we fill in, we know which ones we missed.
Yeah, sure. We can do that. So I'll create a new column here.
If we're going to go out of order.
Yeah, typically, we just go down one by one. So we can come back to AgCom if we want to figure out, schedule-wise. Okay. So American with Disabilities Act Commission. Renee, I also have to ask you, do they meet? Is--
No.
Okay.
Oh, I like that one.
I don't, yeah.
Okay. Do, I'm just wondering if this is like something--
If somebody could maybe revive it, or-- I don't think it's met even before I was on the board. I don't know the last time it met.
We can look into that. I'll just make a note of it. Do they meet? Question mark.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll leave that there. All right. Board of Assessors.
This is one of the ones where I feel like, yeah.
They meet.
They meet at 6:30 on Mondays.
Is it mon, is it every other Monday or monthly? Forget.
That I'm not sure.
Let me see. But they're recorded now. Their meetings are--
Yeah, they are, yeah.
They meet twice a month.
Twice a month. Okay, we'll come back to it. Capital planning, this is something that I am very interested in. If anyone's opposed to it, though, that is okay. Someone else can take it, but I do really want to do this.
I've had experience doing it. I think if you haven't done it yet, I would definitely do it then.
Yeah.
You should do it.
Okay. All right. Council on Aging. I can continue doing this. They meet during the day. I enjoy going to their meetings very much, I have to say, so I can continue on that. Economic Development Committee. Amanda, do you want to stay on with them?
I haven't had too much interaction with them. I do watch their meetings. I'm happy to stay on unless someone else has, you know, a passion for it. Otherwise, happy to, happy to stay on.
Okay.
It might pair up good with the Master Plan Steering Committee.
That's where there was--
Yeah, it seems like it does.
Hoping to have some overlap there.
Okay. Finance Committee.
I can do that. I'd be interested in that.
Okay, yeah.
And the--
And the Appointing Committee as well?
Sure.
Okay. Library Trustees.
How often do they meet? Do we know? And we're going to keep asking you that question.
I know.
I can pull it up, too.
I didn't look at their schedule. I also, I've never been to one of their meetings.
I haven't either.
So I don't know.
They meet. Oh, it looks like they--
It looks like once a month.
Once a month. And it is on--
Thursday.
At night.
I'm willing, you can, you can put me in for either AgCom as well as the library if nobody else is--
Okay.
--into those.
Is AgCom recorded?
No.
I don't think I've seen it.
No, it's not.
You can put me down for Board of Assessors.
Board of Assessors? Okay.
And it's jumping head a little bit, but I'm currently on the, or was on the open space.
Open space? Yep. Okay, thank you. Glenn, the cloud. Glenn, do you want to do Planning Board as well?
Oh, yeah, of course. Love to, actually.
Ryan, you want to do School?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could do School Committee.
Yep. You want to do School Committee? Okay.
I mean, unless somebody does want to interact with the Planning Board. I mean--
I think--
Yeah. I mean, Mr. Brenner is fun to work with.
Yes.
Yeah, he's been great on the Master Plan Steering Committee, too.
All right, let's continue here. So I have MART and MMPO. They don't meet that often. I am more than willing to continue doing it, although I have to be honest, I haven't attended a meeting in quite some time. There isn't really too much to bring back. Every now and then, there is. It's more so just having exposure into what's going on regionally. Sometimes it affects Lunenburg, sometimes it doesn't.
So at, not MART, but MMPO.
Yeah.
If, if we have a road project that we're trying to get on the tip--
Yeah.
Right? Because that's a multi-year project to try to get on the tip.
MMPO or MRPC?
MMPO.
PO is a sub of MRPC, right?
MM, MMPO does the tip.
But it's a sub of, it's like a sidearm or sub of MRPC.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. So MMPO is for the tip. So engagement matters if we have a project that we're trying to get funded through the tip. If we don't, engagement's important, but it, it's not--
It's more so like educational and visibility into the region.
Yep.
If anyone wants, if anyone's interested in doing that, you can take it. MART is, you know, it's interesting that we have a seat on that board, right? And, yeah, we just talked about MMPO. But MART meets every other month, and I think MMPO does as well. They're typically at like 1:00 PM on Tuesday.
Yeah.
I know that doesn't work for, yeah, probably everyone other than Glenn and myself. Are you interested in this at all, Glenn?
And which one is that again?
Um, MART and MMPO.
What does MMPO actually stand for?
Monticujite Metropolitan Planning Organization.
And it is under MRPC.
MRPC.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like a sub--
I know that because at one point, my mom was on these representatives, when she was on the board. So I just, those acronyms--
Yeah, yeah.
--float in, float in my head.
Amanda on Planning Board is that, is liaison for those. She gives--
She does MRPC. So the Planning Board typically does MRPC, and then Select Board does MMPO.
She gives good reports.
Yeah.
Their meetings, but it doesn't sound like they meet, they miss a lot of meetings, it sounds like. For whatever reason.
So I guess you're still waiting an answer from me?
Yeah, do you want to do it?
I mean, if you're unloading it, I suppose I'd take the hit.
I like, I have a full-time job now, so it's really challenging for me to do it.
Yeah.
So, I know it's probably easier for you during the day.
Fine.
Yeah, do you want to do it? Okay. Because it would be good to have that information, and I don't feel like I'm doing a good job with that right now for these two, so.
You can put me for Master Plan Steering Committee unless someone?
I thought I did already, I guess not.
No, you didn't.
Oh, I did it before I made this new column. Okay, so MJTC, MRPC, those are the ones that we have Planning Board do, because it makes more sense for them to be there. So I'm just gonna.
Caesar, also, you had said you were interested in capital planning, you can put your name in there.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
We're almost there.
We are. And then, I guess I'll just copy Renee over here. Okay. Stormwater Task Force, Renee, do you want to continue that?
Yeah, I'll stay with it.
Yeah. Okay, and here's the one that I think you were getting at. Municipal Building Design Committee. What do we want to do with that? Is anyone interested in?
What is gonna happen with?
I was gonna say, is Mr. Jeffrey still interested?
I've served on the.
Yeah, we have someone who's been on that committee for quite some time now, yeah.
Since the start.
I don't know. I don't really know how to best move forward. Something that I want, honestly, is feedback. Like, maybe, I'm thinking we should do like a survey or something. I would really like to have like some data and opinions from the public about how the public thinks we should move forward.
You mean with the committee in and of itself, or with the represent?
No, neither, with the project.
Oh, I just got really confused because I thought we were.
No, I was just saying that just to say. I plan to bring that up when we got to this. But as for who, as for who does it? You know, I think we need to just have the discussion if any one of us is interested. Brian, if you're interested, because you've been on the committee for so long, and you're on the Select Board now as our, you know, liaison and representative, makes sense.
Yeah, I would be still interested.
Yep, okay. And then, middle high school classes. So I've been doing this with Michael Ray. Honestly, it's been one of my favorite things that I've done as a Select Board member. But we do typically like to do it in pairs, so I would like for someone else to do it with me.
What does it involve?
So it mostly involves talking through logistics for the civics projects, their groups. So you'll meet with them, or you'll email back and forth, and they'll pitch an idea to you and say, hey, like, we're trying to do a, you know, trash cleanup. And you have to make sure that they're identifying all the approvals they need, all the like potential issues, and kind of just walking them through and helping them understand the process. That's the big thing. I think this year, it's also gonna, it's also gonna be really important to make sure that there's a better timeline. So whether it's communicating to us a little more early about what their ideas are, and working a little more collaboratively with department heads and the town manager to make sure that any sort of approval is, you know, not putting any undue burden or stress on our department heads. I think that's something that we have to do. So just making it a little more organized and having a better timeline.
I'm happy to step in on that one. You know, I miss being there. I used to teach the self-defense class in the seniors when I was in the police department. So unless, you know, anyone else wants to step in, I'm happy to work with you on that.
It is probably the most fun one.
Yeah, I think so, too. I know in the past, Lou Franco and Michael Ray did it two years ago, and they did actually go in and speak to some classes. It's not something I've done, but it's possible to as well.
It's great going there and working with them.
Yeah, I haven't done it yet, but who knows, maybe we can do it this year, Amanda. All right, and then the 300th Committee, I can stay on this. I've been attending their meetings since like last September, I believe. Unless anyone else wants it. This is a fun one, too.
Happy to have you keep it. I'm planning on attending as, just because I'm interested in it as well.
Okay.
But.
All right.
I'm not gonna just try to steal it from you, Caesar.
Oh, that's, it's not stealing, you're more than welcome to have it. Okay. All right, so we can come back to this. I know we sort of, we made it through, and, you know, maybe we did a little quickly. If we want to do a second pass at this, we can. But yeah, it looks like we have everything assigned here that we need to. I could probably just remove these two, but anyway, this is a side note. All right, any other discussion on liaisons for tonight? All right, thank you very much.
Mr., did you just say remove the MRPC?
No, MJTC and MRPC, because those we have Planning Board members.
You don't need a second, you don't need a alternate from the Select Board for MRPC?
For MRPC.
Yeah, like Planning Board's the primary. I'm comparing this to CMRPC, to be fair.
Yeah.
So I know they had like, the Planning Board member was the primary, and there was a Select Board member alternate. I don't know if MRPC is similar.
Yeah, I know it's like come to both of us before about attendance. I remember now every year it has been blank. So that's why I just remember that. We probably could. I mean, Glenn, do you want to go down as the alternate on this one, too? They don't meet that frequently.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And it's also, you know, you were on the Planning Board, so.
Often's planning, right to the table.
Exactly. I think it's actually really helpful. I mean, we have Brian here, right, with the school committee now, Glenn with the Planning Board, so. Okay. I can't figure out how to center it because the toolbar is missing, so I'll just skip that for now. All right. Moving on to old business. First, we have the discussion on the sick leave bank policy. And Jen, I'm gonna let you introduce this, because I know you have an update for it as well.
Yes, so recognizing that there's two new members on the board, and you haven't heard much about the sick leave bank policy. Just a brief intro. At the special town meeting, there was adopted as part of the SAP, the Salary Administrative Plan, a personnel bylaw, two things, the sick leave bank and the merit policy that by their incorporation into the SAP, apply only to those employees who are not members of other bargaining units. In realizing that that's not gonna be the way that works. So this is a policy to expand upon that personnel bylaw, to take the sick leave bank and apply it over all employees in all bargaining units. So that's the goal here, the board.
Wait, inclusive or exclusive of the schools? We said you said all.
Exclusive of the schools. And exclusive of intermittent or seasonal employees. So, because they're not benefit eligible. But, so when we first discussed this, it was maybe four weeks ago, it was before our time meeting, about four weeks ago. There's a lot of conversation about reorganizing the kind of structure of this policy, putting the definitions section up front, working on language. I'm not gonna change this a whole heck of a lot of times until I substantively change it once. So those comments have been heard. I did reach out to all employees and sent this to them to get their feedback. I had one employee provide feedback. So today, actually, there was a meeting. Then, after that, we've met with the benefits administrator to understand her concerns about application. Today, we met with all bargaining unit presidents. And that was a very fruitful conversation. They have to bring.
Specifically about this?
Specifically about this. They have to bring some of this back to their units. But here's one thing that is pretty universal coming out of that meeting today. There was discussion about what about my day is not your day? Your hours are sick days. Should we have separate banks for the separate bargaining units? It was universal that they believed that we should have one bank that applies to everybody. And whatever your day is, as defined in the SAP, or your contract, whatever it is, your day is your day. So some people are contributing six hours, some people are contributing 24, but you're contributing a day. They were unanimous on that.
So then they would be pulling out the same thing?
They were pulling out a day. So they pull out a day.
So if you put in 24, you pull out 24.
Put in 24, you pull out 24. So no hours. The other thing that we had pretty consistently is that once you enroll, they do want that to be irrevocable. That's, they are bringing that one back, though, to their, I said, bring this one back to your members, because.
Really?
Interesting.
The conversation here was that once you're in, you're in, but I said, this one's gonna be, this is probably the most controversial thing about this policy is whether it's irrevocable or not. So they're gonna bring that back to their members. There was, the way it was written was that it is irrevocable. We had some discussion, well, maybe people would want to come out and go back in. But they were pretty firm on that. They also, so you have to work for the town for one year. At the end of the year, you can enroll in the sick leave bank. That's the way we have this currently designed. We had that then you had to wait for another six months, I believe, another six months before you could utilize the bank. They said, no. We've waited a year to get in the bank, we're in the bank, we're in the bank. Get rid of that. However, for those folks who, at time of employment, they chose not to enroll in the sick leave bank, and chose later to enroll in an open enrollment period. Because there could be a little possibility of folks only enrolling for personal reasons, they did say for that. If you're not enrolling at time of hire, you have to wait a year to use it. They, so. Roll if.
Got it. So they're not saying it's only the one time to enroll, and that's it?
Right. So you can enroll anytime at open enrollment, which would be.
Every year.
Every year, at the end of the fiscal, for the beginning of the new fiscal, you can enroll. And then, but if you want to use it, and you are, you're late, you've worked here for five years, and now you want to enroll, you have to wait for a full year.
Full year, based on your employment date?
No, so, okay, so let me give two, so. So Renee is hired on July 1st, and Amanda is hired on July 1st. Renee decides, I'm going to enroll in the sick leave bank as soon as I'm eligible. She is, you're both eligible after one year of employment. So Renee, I'm gonna do it right away, she enrolls. Amanda says, eh, I'm not gonna enroll, I don't need a sick leave bank. Amanda waits four, five, 10 years. Amanda decides to now enroll later in the sick leave bank. From the, she can enroll anytime in open enrollment, but once she's in, she has to wait a year to use benefits.
So on my 10th year, I enroll, then I have to wait until my 11th year before I can use it.
Yep.
So the date that you enroll, so that July 1st would become the one-year date before you can use it?
Yep, and that's only if you didn't do it at time of hire, or at time of first eligibility.
I was thinking more situations where people, their employment starts, say, July 2nd, August 1st.
Oh.
What constitutes, because open enrollment.
We did talk about this today, and they were like, a year is a year, and I'm sorry if you, it's July 2nd.
If, so you have to wait another, you have to wait more than a year for the next open enrollment?
No, 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 you don't have to wait for open enrollment if you're, it's your first year. So your anniversary, so you're hired not on July 1st, you're hired on February 20th. August 1st, then you can enroll, because you have worked here for a year. So now you can enroll in the bank. If you choose not to enroll at the bank in your one, at your one-year anniversary, now you're in the situation where if you enroll during open enrollment only, you have to wait a year to utilize the bank.
Question on that. Do you enroll, I understand the year, but would that be during like your hiring process? Or would it be, would you get a reminder at that year mark? Because I wouldn't want people to lose.
Nope, the sick leave bank committee would be tasked with notifying people that they are eligible to enroll in the program.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be, I'd be concerned if it wasn't.
They will be notifying them, we talked about, they'll have one month from notification to enroll. So you became eligible, you have one month to enroll, enroll or don't. Let me see. There was also discussion about, at time of separation, sometimes people are leaving a whole heck of a lot of sick time on the table. We couldn't have people donating all of their sick time, because that would be a huge liability. But there was a desire to be able to donate sometime, I believe, in my opinion, two days at separation is reasonable, that you can donate at your exit from the town an additional two days to the bank. That just helps the bank.
It is a minimum two days to enroll, correct?
It's, so to enroll, you have to, your first year is two days. Your second year is two days. And then you are one day for every year thereafter, until the bank reaches a threshold, which we have 300. They would like to see that increased to 365. So, and then they also want to see the floor of 50 be increased as well, so that, and for, so we are, we are giving two, two days our first year, two days our second year. One year, one day every year thereafter until we reach whatever the cap is, 300, 365. There's language in here, though, if the bank dips below 50, that now, everybody is now gonna be assessed at that two-day again until we get back up. They want to make that 50 higher, so that it's, it's not dropping as low as 50, and it's less work to get it back up.
That makes sense.
Well, yeah, unless you're the one giving two days all the time, we'll see.
There was a little bit of discussion on, did folks want the sick leave bank committee? One of the comments that did come in from one staff member was, I don't want a group of my peers knowing about my medical condition. In the discussion that came around that, and in the discussion that made, came around the sick leave bank committee makeup, as well as adding a grievance policy. So these two things go together. Removing a Select Board, remove the Select Board member from the sick leave bank committee. Now the sick leave bank committee is comprised of either myself or the assistant town manager, and then you have bargaining unit representatives. They already have confidential information of all types about their employees. So everybody is kind of already in that confidential place as a, as a union president. Then, to have, with having no Select Board on there, then, if there is an appeal, the appeal process would come to the Select Board in executive session. If we can do it in executive session, which I think we probably can, I gotta figure that out.
Yeah.
But, otherwise.
We had a lot of discussion about the makeup of this and who it should be, and.
And so they were pretty, pretty firm that they wanted it to be their bargaining unit representatives.
Is there any conflict there, though?
No, because it's all, it's a majority of all of the groups. So DPW, clerical, fire, police.
SAP.
SAP has.
How would that be?
One representative of the non-union. How, that's a good question, how do we pick the SAP? That's a good question.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
How do we pick the SAP?
Yeah, I don't remember what we.
We didn't come to.
We didn't come up to anything, but we did discuss it for a bit.
I mean, it could be applications, and then, let's talk about that more. Let me talk about that with the staff. The 15 days of sick leave that you are going to the bank 15 days at a time, they did not like that.
Wait, what? I don't remember.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know, I'm just kind of going stream of consciousness here. It's on the last page, number six. No more than 15 days may be granted to any one applicant at any time. They would like that increased to 30.
Yeah, I wasn't thrilled with that either.
Yeah.
And I think that that's where we got to today, so.
Okay. Did you, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you talk about the use that we've, you know, because we talked about?
Yes, so that's, so that's the, so 100%, everybody understands that it's for the employee and the employee only. It's not for others. I did ask them to bring back to their bargaining units, there were two specific things that I said bring back. One was the irrevocability of it, and the second was number four on page three. And that's to be eligible for program benefits, the applicant must have a medical condition verified and documented by a physician, which requires, here's the key language, which requires a prolonged period of recuperation and/or absence from work resulting in the exhaustion of all earned sick vacation, personal, or any other pay leave. There is an understanding that this is not for your broken arm, that this is for serious diagnosis. I've asked them to bring it back to their members to say, what do you think about this language? And how do you feel that this should be?
Okay.
What about covering, you know, caring for a family member?
No, not under a sick leave bank. This is for the employee.
Okay.
That's, they won't, I don't think you'll have participation. And so the goal here, to have a robust sick leave bank, is we want maximum participation.
Right.
I'm surprised it's, you're in, you're in, there's no out. There's no way out.
I think they're viewing it as, so there was a fair amount of discussion about even the folks. We had a fair amount of discussion today about whether you could opt in if you didn't opt in at the beginning. And so I think that there's a lot of fairness and equity that's coming into things like this. Like, if you have, from the members' perspective, if you have worked for the town and been a member of this bank for 15 years, and you have somebody else that's, I'm enrolling, I'm unenrolling, I'm enrolling five years from now, and I'm unenrolling. They don't want, you're either in, or you're not in.
And we discussed that a lot, too, and it sounds like that was just their way of dealing with it.
Not being able to get out feels weird. I mean, I get getting in, but what, like.
Like, even if it's after five years, if you want out, you know, something, not, you can't do a hokey pokey in, out, in, out.
So this, remember, so we had a conversation with presidents. So we had five people in a room who now are bringing it back to 50 people.
I wouldn't be opposed to saying like, if you get out-
That's it.
You can't get back in.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know that we should say you can't get out. I mean, is there any, any other, any other benefits that we have that you can't be removed from? Once you've, I mean, any other insurances, you know, you can always leave.
Opt out, yeah.
Yeah.
You have a qualifying event, you know?
Right, you might, so there was some discussion about that, um.
I, I wouldn't, I mean, this is a staff policy that we're trying to do for the staff, so I will defer, personally, I feel like I'll defer to them on that, but, um, I can see, you know, once you're out, you can't get back in. I just, I would have a hard time, and I'm worried that that would make people not wanna enroll.
Yeah, and so I'm already hearing that folks, especially who are near the end of their careers, are, are just not interested in enrolling at all. And so we really wanna make sure that, that we are gonna have to do some education about what a sick leave bank is, too, right? Like, what are the benefits, what are the detriments? What does this look like?
It's, it's, so this, I don't know how to, where, where my thoughts are, you know? A staff, the staff as a community, in the couple of times where we've had this happen, prior to having a sick leave bank, there was an overwhelming amount of support for people that wanted to donate.
Informally, the informal.
Informally, when this was, when this has happened, there were some problems, which has caused a lot of issues, but we're working through that, right? So, in that event, by having this policy, that no longer could or would happen.
Correct. Oh, there would be no more informal.
Right, so it would be, this is it. So there would definitely would need to be education, because heaven forbid, somebody has, you know, a really terrible cancer diagnosis, and now all these people wanna donate, but they weren't before. There's gonna have to be, I would say, a lot of education, we don't wanna, we're trying to do this to help, not hurt.
Right.
Um.
Or if they have a child that gets seriously ill, that's not covered either.
That's covered under FMLA, so they have job protection.
So they are eligible for FMLA?
Not PFML, not paid, it's just job protection under FMLA. Um, but it's the paid, I don't-
Well.
I don't think you're gonna get people to say, I'm giving two days to you, to the bank, so that somebody's fill-in-the-blank relative can utilize it.
Hmm.
Is that addressed in any other policies? I know we've talked about this a lot, but in any of the other town policies that we looked at?
The relic-
I feel like it's mostly just the employee.
The sick time?
Yeah.
Uh, so, so sick time is inconsistent, um, between the SAP and the various bargaining.
Sorry, no, I don't mean, I don't mean the, I'm well aware of that.
Okay.
I, I mean, when you were looking at the, uh, different other towns' sick bank policies.
Oh, I see.
Is it usually exclusive to the, the employees, or do other towns?
Yes, universally, universally, universally for the employee and universally for, I mean, we're not talking about compound fractures. We're talking about cancer, heart attack, stroke.
Yeah.
But there aren't other towns, at least the ones that we've looked at, that allow it for, you know, their child, family members or stuff? I didn't think so.
I would also recommend looking at the, the school, the school contract as well, the teacher contract. I've served on the, the sick bank committee in the schools. Um, specific language there can, I think, assist us. I do have concerns with some of the language, the, the first section differs a lot by what the schools, uh, have. The, the program shall administer, be administered by the sick leave bank committee at a minimum. That, that concerns me, that there's no maximum, there's no set number. Uh, you find in a lot of teacher contracts, especially, it's actually four, uh, four members, and it's typically two that are on the administrative side and two on the employee side. Uh, and they can be just designees, too. That would be the language that I would support, I think this language is a, a very, um, worker-friendly, employee-friendly language that if you have one representative from each of the participating collective bargaining units, you could definitely be outnumbered. I would support a two and a two, I think that would make more sense.
I'm not sure that we'd have town, having served on, you know, like, say, the PUC, where we have a member from each unit.
Yes.
I think we would have a, a problem getting the staff on board with eliminating, I feel like the, that the union presidents feel very strongly that they represent their members, and I think if we try to say, you know, you can only have two of the, you know, however, five units, there are, I think we would have, I see what you're saying, but I think because we have so many different units, you know, like, the police department's gonna wanna represent the police department, and then if you pick, say, say it's police and clerical that get chosen as having the powers.
They feel like they're not represented.
And I, I think that that would be opening a can of worms, personally. I, I don't think we'd have staff support.
Oh, I don't think they'd enroll. I don't think they'd enroll, I don't, yeah.
We did have a lot of discussion about how this program would be administering, what the committee would look like, you know? I'd have to go back and watch that meeting.
There was discussion about whether we would just live with, myself and Julie. I, I had expressed during that meeting, I was not interested in living with only Julie and I. The staff expressed very clearly today that they also shared that opinion, that they did not want it to live only with management. Um, they are looking for, for fairness, equity. Um, I think that everybody was pretty realistic in the discussions. I think that our union presidents are very realistic about, a, a, about being fair to the town as well. Um, and I don't think that they're, they would be looking, listen, because at the end of the day, their time is in this bank, too.
Mm-hmm.
They don't wanna, they don't wanna give away time in the bank unfettered and unjust, like, with no discretion, because-
They might need it.
They might need it.
Hmm.
They have a vested interest to watch the pot.
In the, what, 12 years I was, 12, 14, however many years I was here? Uh, we had three, three cases where this was, this would've been used or where we did it informally. And that's, that was just my tenure of, of the town. Um, that's correct, there's three, there were three in the, yeah.
I'm curious about the using days versus hours discussion. What was the thought on that?
Oh.
I mean, they went, they settled on days.
Oh, they, they were like, they didn't care, they said, they said, I mean, it was very much, he works the 24, she works an eight, I work a, I work a 12, it's all good.
Okay.
My day is my day.
And did you bring that back? I know our payroll benefits coordinator is retiring, but did you bring that back to her? Cause I know-
So she is, she was on, she's on vacation this week, so we talked last week, so she wasn't with us. So the way that this was left is that everybody's bringing it back to their bargaining units. And, um, and that we are gonna regroup when Nancy's back.
Okay.
And so that would be the first week in June, so we'll regroup. So probably you're not gonna see any updates for the first week of June, um, but I think we'll, we might be close. Now, the other thing is, the SAP said that this is to be in place by July 1, right? We had a conversation that the, the staff is more interested in having this done correctly than having something in place for July 1. And, and again, July 1 is really only as it applies to the SAP employees. Because that's the only people that were covered by the article.
Glenn, did you still have something?
Yeah, if the cap is, do you anticipate this cap running at, at max most of the time?
So the, the 300 is not a cap, the 300, because if new members are enrolling, or if people are donating, there may be more than 300.
Okay, that was my question, if it was, if it just stopped, if you stopped collecting from the employees with someone?
We stopped collecting from the, the, the existing enrollees who have already helped get the cap to 300. But anybody new that's coming in, they still have to give their 2-2.
Yeah.
Is that clear? I feel like that's, is it clear now? Okay.
Yeah, we discussed that quite a bit, too.
And, and the whole committee process really seems complex. I didn't know if there was a way that, you know, it could go within the department and the department head could chime in and basically approve each case forward to the town manager. Because, and I don't specifically remember how we did it, but it was, it must've been informal, because it didn't happen much. And what we would do is the word would go out, like so-and-so's looking for sick days, and we'd go on. What, what I liked about that is that it had a, a built-in checks and balances where people were like, they knew that person abused sick time, so they wouldn't donate. But someone like me that would, uh, there was a lot of us that were at max, so we're like, yeah, sure, have, have, have the time, no problem. So I, I kinda like the, the informal aspect, it sounds like you guys have had problems with that in the past, which does not shock me. But I, I do, I do like the, you know, maybe a, a hybrid of that, like the, the informal, um, but with the, 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 the department head or manager supervisor kind of approves the, 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 the case forward to maybe a smaller committee or something.
So the, so because it's, it's, so if we would stood it up, like, where we had the one policy, and we had different bargaining units had their own pools, I think that that would make sense. But this is one pool.
Right.
Right, so who gate keeps the one pool? It shouldn't be that department head.
So Glenn, are you saying if someone abuses their sick time, and something, you know, awful happens, and they need a lot of sick time, that they shouldn't be eligible to withdraw from the bank? Is that what you-
No, I wouldn't go, I, I mean, that, that, I mean, it gets so hard to regulate, you know, those type of issues. That the, I think that's one of the advantages that an informal system has, is, um, this kind of an automatic checks and balances in the process, cause there's historically employees that would, if they got a sick day, they'd use a sick day.
Mm-hmm.
Not a lot.
No, I hear, I know those types of cases, but the issues that we had here in town with it being informal was that it, it felt to a lot of employees that it was, if, you know, if you were liked, or if you know this person, then you got approved, and if you weren't, and you didn't, it became, there were some huge issues, as well as procedurally, you know, could one, you know, somebody from the, the police union donate to this DPW union?
Yep.
It, it, it's become glaringly obvious that we need a policy in order to allow this to happen, because sometimes it's being denied, because there doesn't, a policy doesn't exist, or it has historically, not that it's happening right now. But I think this definitely has stemmed out of situations that we need to fix.
So would it be possible to have these type of policies for each department head or supervisor to follow?
So, we could have a policy if we split it up by the bargaining unit members and the non-bargaining unit members. We could set it up that way, that it was, it's really individualized in that manner. So that would be, again, police, uh, fire, DPW, clerical, and then SAP. Um, the concern from the members is that the pools in that case might be small.
Yeah.
And, and there are, like I said, in those three cases that happened, there are members from other units that want to donate to other employees.
Yeah.
And if we do that, then that eliminates, at least, unless there's some workaround that I'm not aware of, that eliminates that. You know, you have the clerical union, which is what, 12 members? Versus, you know, the, the police department that's larger, so I think, you know, we're not the school, the teachers that have, you know, that many employees. If we do it separately per unit, we're really limiting that.
There, there, there was no interest in going in alone, I was surprised, frankly. I thought that there was, I thought that there was gonna be a little bit of the, well, my day isn't your day conversation. That was absent from the conversation entirely.
This has been a conversation with staff for years of wanting to do this.
So TBD.
Yeah.
June.
Conversation's ongoing.
Conversation's ongoing, I'm sure there's bargaining unit members watching her.
Oh, there certainly are.
There are.
But thank you, though, I'm really glad that they're, we're really making progress on this. I really like that you're working collaboratively with everyone, too, so thank you for, uh, all the work that you've put into getting this moving forward.
Um, to Brian's point, do we have the schools, I'm just curious to read the language, did, did we already get it?
No, I don't think so.
I don't have a contract.
Yeah.
I wonder if we, I'm sure we did get it.
You could probably get it.
I'm just curious what the language is compared.
Yeah, I am too, actually. So, yeah.
Cause they have one that's already working, so it's, it's, see if there's things you might wanna, like that.
Yeah, if you wanna, just send that.
Yeah, I'll send that right now.
Jen, if you wanna.
Mm-hmm.
Look at that, too. All right, thank you. Discussion on acceptance of gift policy. So the reason why we are doing this, uh, for a little bit of context, the select board has to vote to accept all gifts that are donated to the town. And while we have to do that statutorily, we never had a policy in place, and that caused some confusion for both the public and staff as well. So this policy really is just a guide, a public-facing guide, and an internal guide for staff to follow when we do get gifts that are donated to the town. And I mean, what else is there to really say about that?
No, I think this one's more straightforward, I, I would suggest that just the new members-
Just read through it.
Just take a read, and if you have any questions, or what, language suggestions?
Right. So I don't think we need to discuss it tonight, I was just looking for our new members to just start looking at this, and then we can bring it up at another meeting. Um, I don't think there was really anything that we left that you, you're still looking into?
It was just tweaking of language, but nothing-
Nothing like substantial.
Something run by town council.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't remember what that was, can you remind me what that was?
Yeah, it's office hours tomorrow, so, um, about, um, solicitation.
Oh, that's right, okay.
About active solicitation of funds and how that looks.
Sure, okay, so you'll get an answer from town council. Great, okay. So, yeah, if you can just read into that, and we can pick it back up in June and, um, have more of a conversation then. Okay. Moving on, tax investigation report. So unfortunately, this was never approved, and it is on us at this point to accept the investigation report as it was submitted to us. Um, we're at a point now where there are no members of this board that were on that investigation subcommittee. So at least for me, I don't feel as though we should really be modifying this. Um, I personally believe pretty strongly that we should just vote to accept it as it was submitted to us by the, um, investigation subcommittee. What do you guys think?
I agree with you. Um, I think I've said this in a couple of meetings, while I, while I watched this and followed it as, as a resident, um, I was not here, I wasn't on the board, I wasn't privy to it. I mean, I've, I've read through the very, very lengthy report, um, but I wouldn't feel comfortable recommending changes to it.
Renee, what do you think?
I haven't read the final report.
Okay.
In its entirety.
Okay, so we can hold off on it.
Has it changed?
Uh, no, it hasn't changed, really.
It's probably the same.
Yeah, it is. Um.
No, I, um, member MQ wasn't here last, so there were a couple of changes last, between, yeah.
There was only-
In the report or in the executive summary?
There was a few changes in both.
Um, both, I think both, there was something about the mailing.
Yes.
The mailing, and then there was, um, Tom had asked for some clar, uh, some different language in the summary, I thought. And that, and Michael Ray had done that.
Yeah, Michael Ray made a few changes, and he did go through it at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
One was definitely the mailing.
Yes.
I have to watch it.
I recall the mailing, I know that there was this other, um, the spreadsheet of additional data that was included. I thought it was just those two things, I could be wrong. Um, we can, we can go back and look. Um, but Jen, I know that you've read through this and you're, you know, having conversations about it, and do you wanna-
Yeah.
Speak to what you're taking away from this?
So my takeaway is, this was just, first of all, this was just a horrible circumstance of events that seem to all have collided. And what is wonderful about this report coming to a conclusion is that it's very clear that there was no malicious intent, there was no mal-intent, that this was just a variety of factors. That said, I wanna make sure that this never happens again, right? So, um, with the final report, having a meeting already scheduled with our assessor and finance director to go through the report jointly with them, and, and there are some specific ways and manners in which this process went off the rails in the past, to make sure that we have systems in place, that this can't happen again. And that's probably gonna be a process, right? But we're gonna start that.
I would assume we had to accept that, this in order for-
No, I think, I think that, I think that regardless of that, it's, these are best practices things, right? So make sure that we're doing our best practices and that we're-
Cause nobody on the current board or the principal assessor was here when this started.
Which is why I, I-
Brian, I know, Brian and Sarah came in and kinda righted the ship, but-
Right.
And that's why, too, like-
And the assessor, and none of the assessing staff, and the finance director.
This is, which is why I would not, absolutely not feel comfortable making adjustments to it.
Making any modifications to it, I understand. So-
I would just like to read it.
Yeah, I know.
I missed last week.
Renee, we can give you a chance to read through it, and then we can pick it up at our next meeting. Brian or Glenn, anything you wanna say about this?
No, I've just started reading it.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, read through it as well, we can, we can discuss it, um, but I, I don't think I'd wanna make modifications.
Once this is accepted, I know that, you know, the, the community has wanted to see this, will this be?
Online.
Yeah, we'll post it on the, on the website.
I think it's important to have this open and out there and move forward, and also to identify maybe what you're doing to make sure this doesn't happen again, might be helpful.
Sure.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we definitely have to do that, people have been waiting for a very long time.
Yeah.
So, it has to go out to the public, and, you know, it's unfortunate that it took this long, but-
It looks like some of these things are incomplete, actually. Just scrolling through here, there's a sentence that's just, the capital T, on what page?
Okay, well-
Weird, page 13.
I'll look.
Is that my Mac again?
Hold on, page 13?
Mm-hmm. I'm wondering if that was, I guess he made a couple of adjustments while we were here.
You see just the word "the"? Where?
Uh, end of the first paragraph, however, over the course of 24 months, comma, the T.
Okay, I will get clarification on that, obviously, things like that, yes, we'll have to fix, so page 13.
Maybe, maybe there's another version.
The T, I will-
Changes, didn't accept all changes or something?
Yeah, I will find out. Thank you for catching that. All right, so we do need to give this a second look. All right, so we will do that, and we will pick it back up in June. 56 car Ave, sell or hold? So this is a property, uh, that we have, that we have to determine if we wanna sell or hold, it's currently in, uh, tax title. And Jen, would you like to talk to the board and the public about tax title, what that means and what the process is?
I would love to. So, for many, many, many years, um, in Massachusetts, So for many, many, many years in Massachusetts, when somebody had not paid their property taxes, the town can initiate a tax title taking. We still can, so that's still the same. Under that, under the old process, what would happen is at the end of going through about a year and a half of the courts and doing the title research, the town has possession now of the property. We get a judgment, we have possession. What do we do once we have the property? A lot of times, we don't want it, right? These, we want it, the goal is to get it back on the tax rolls. So we would auction it and, or sell it, and the, the proceeds from that sale would just turn over to the general fund. There was a Supreme Court case, state, not state, a federal Supreme Court case that basically, there's a couple of states that had similar makeups of, or similar statutory schemes.
It was Minnesota, yeah.
That, that they would receive the benefits of that sale. The, the Supreme Court said, no, you can't do that. So there's now, the legislature has stepped in, enacted legislation for what happens during the process and what happens with those funds. So first of all, if we sell a property, we don't get to retain any of the funds any longer. We get to retain our, what was originally owned, any of the interest and penalties that ran, and any of our associated court costs, or any of our legal fees. Any other surplus, if there is any other surplus at the time after the auction, gets returned to the original owner of the property. However, sometimes the town doesn't want to sell the property. Sometimes the town says, actually, it just so happens that we may have another use for this property, in which case they want to hold the property, they want to retain the property. However, because of that, that provision being removed, that we can't retain the value, the monetary value of the sale, we also can't retain the value without compensating folks for the value. So now we have to get an appraisal if we're interested in selling the property. So that's kind of like a, a very succinct state of the land of tax title. 56 Car Ave is a property that's in tax title. There has been some interest that the town may have some interest in retaining this property. So the select board had voted, maybe, yeah, I was going to say, a couple of months ago, that they would like an appraisal done on the property. So we have hired, or in the process of hiring an appraiser, we were told it was going to be $500. Turns out it's $2,000. To conduct an appraisal of 56 Car, they have to, it's the highest and best value of the land, so what is that worth? Highest and best, whatever could happen to it. So, um, so that's going to happen.
What's the timeline for the appraisal?
So the, he was supposed, so I would say within the next week.
Okay, oh, cool.
So, yeah.
Pretty soon.
Yes, no more than a month, though. The contract's being written to not exceed a month. So.
One other thing I was going to ask the board, too. We want an appraisal so we could understand if we wanted to potentially hold on to it, but at least for me, I know it would be really helpful if we organized a site visit, so I wanted to know if other members of the board would be interested in actually going to that property? Is that something that we would want to do?
I would want to.
Yeah, okay. So we can try to organize that.
As a board?
Yeah.
As a board in a meeting?
Yep, so it would have to be a meeting.
Right, unless we wanted to do it like individually, which would be a lot of work.
No, I'd rather, I'd rather go together and be able to talk about it.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right, so we'll try to organize a site visit for that.
I do want to raise one other point, Mr. Chair, if I can.
Yeah.
Use this agenda item to kind of talk about this. I just got an email from Representative Scarsdale. There is a bill, a House bill being proposed by the House Minority Leader. I mention that it's by the House Minority Leader because he actually has traction to potentially get some things done, right? So that speaks to the tax title process in Massachusetts. They, the legis, I don't have the number of the legislation, Representative was reaching out to see what we thought as town administrators of it. They're thinking of doing a tax amnesty program. They tried a tax amnesty program, I forget when, but maybe 2014, and it didn't work well because towns at that time could sell the property.
Yeah, for the full value of it.
Get the full value after the, after the auction. The, because that's off the table now, they're talking about doing a temporary amnesty program that would be very limited in duration, that municipalities could opt into, that people, the municipality would have a lot of flexibility. You'd have to pay the original taxes that are owed, but the municipality would have flexibility, could you waive penalties, could you waive interest? You could go down to just the original tax. In my opinion, and what I shared with the representative, is again, like enforcement, the goal is compliance in tax title, and is, is the goal is to get the property back on the tax rolls.
Yeah.
And so I think, in my opinion, I'd rather have the property back on the tax rolls than worry about the penalties and interest. So that could be interesting if that goes somewhere.
Yeah.
We might want to pay attention to that legislation and see if it passes, if we want to opt in.
Yeah, sure. Can you, can you send the tat, the bill over?
I sure can.
I'm curious about that, I'd like to read through it. Okay. Well, thank you, though. Looks like we have a lot of movement here as well. Glad the appraisal's happening, and we can figure out a site visit. So we'll try to coordinate sometime when the weather's nice.
Once we have a site visit, we have the appraisal, is there a time, is there any other timeline? I know once we file, there's, there's 14 days.
Emotion, yeah. Once, once we make a decision, that timer starts. We have pretty much however much time we want until then.
You have forever.
Yeah.
Literally forever. You don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
We never have to go to judgment.
Right.
But it's, once we, and now, if we, we're getting this appraisal for informational purposes. If we go to judgment and we want to keep it, we're going to need another appraisal because there's time, there's indexing of the appraisal with the time of the judgment.
I see, okay.
But this is, we, we need this information for you to make a decision about what to do.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Any other discussion on that tonight? All right. Minutes, we don't have any tonight. Warrants, do you have any warrants?
No.
Nope, no warrants. Action items. Oh, I guess I'll use this opportunity to direct our new members to our action item tracker. So if you go to documents, right, exit out from 2025 meetings and just go to documents, and then scroll down, once you get past all the year meetings, you'll see a folder called action items. And then in there, we have a spreadsheet, and this is pretty much just where we track them for now, or we're trying to start tracking them. So I guess we can probably clear this out and start it over. Like tax investigation report, we might as well just like remove that, we're doing that now. Let's see, we're going to want to go through the shared drive, but that'll be after July once we have an executive assistant. State of the organization, we got the presentation from Julie, but we still needed, I believe what was requested was the org chart.
Yeah, I don't see probably the assistant town manager being able to do an org chart until after July either.
I can only imagine that's a lot of work to create an org chart. As much as I'm really interested in seeing it, it's not the priority. So I think some of these, we can probably just start over, but I just wanted to make you aware that this is here, if you wanted to look at it, and we do usually go off of this. So with all that said, are there any action items tonight?
When do we do goals?
Yeah, so I was going to bring that up once we got to upcoming meetings because I know that we have some vacation time. I guess we can just talk about it now. So Brian and Glenn, I think both of you have time in early June where you won't be here, is that correct?
Correct.
I will be at a work conference from June 10th to the 17th, but I should have the evenings available that I could jump in on Zoom.
Jump in, okay, cool. All right, let me write this down.
Mr. Chairman, are you contemplating this as a workshop style, that this is probably the only agenda item unless there's emergencies?
I was going to discuss that, too, if we wanted to do it like that as well.
I absolutely think we should.
Yeah. It's very helpful to do it that way.
It's hard to have these meetings that start running toward 11:00 PM when you're trying to accomplish things, so if we want to, you know, focus on goals, that workshop that we had, I feel like we did a lot in it.
It was very productive.
Yeah. I think from my perspective as well, I think it would be helpful if the board, if we did on that same night, you do your goals and objectives, and then you set my goals and objectives.
Oh, well, that's already going to happen.
But like on that same night, that it, this is not two, this is not a bifurcated process.
No, it's, it's united, and that was a goal that we had, and which is why we wanted to do that policy. We didn't get to it, we will after we go through this process. But yes, we will do the select board and the town manager goals on the same night. I do want to have a workshop. One thing I was considering with all this time, we could just hold off and schedule one workshop, or we could do it, what we've done in the past is we sort of have members sort of present what they want for goals, and then we compile it all and do the workshop. If we want to just have one workshop, we could do that, so.
I think we should just have one workshop.
Okay, as long as we're planning it and we're all prepared for it, I think that's totally fine.
You might want to consider.
A Saturday?
You might want to consider a Saturday.
I don't care about that.
If it's June, every single Saturday for me is booked.
Okay.
Saturdays are really difficult. I have, I have four weddings in June.
Well, congratulations. Well, let's go back.
It's not me, I don't think I'm married.
Let's go back to the absences first. So Glenn, when will you not be here?
Specifically for Tuesdays, the 3rd.
The 3rd?
Yep.
Okay, so the first week.
Yeah, correct.
Renee or Amanda, any absences in June? So it can't be the 3rd. We could, we could schedule it for, well, the 24th is the last Tuesday of the month, so no.
That week I am away.
I think the earlier, so remember, the goal flows, right? So select board goals, become town manager goals, become department head goals, so there's a lot, once these goals are set, there's a lot of trickle-down effect that has to happen, so.
I understand it has to happen as early as possible.
As early as possible.
Just trying to make sure, and preferably everyone would be here in person. So what we could do is do it on the 10th, and, because then Brian, you would be able to attend remotely?
No, I will be away.
Okay, the 17th.
Be flying on the 10th.
Oh, the 17th?
I believe.
The 9th.
The 9th?
And don't have a meeting on the 10th.
Oh, and Monday, the 9th?
Be back until the 18th.
What about Monday, June 9th? Would we want to do it on a Monday before Brian leaves?
And then no meeting on the 10th?
And then no meeting on the 10th.
Should work for me.
Works for me.
Renee, does that work for you?
Hold on, I'm checking my other calendar. I think that's okay. And still the same time?
Could we do?
We could do earlier if that works for everyone.
I could do 6:00, I don't know what other.
Yeah, I think 6:00 is the earliest I can do.
That's fine. All right, so we'll do that. Thank you, great idea. Monday, June 9th at 6:00 PM.
And we're going to cancel the 10th.
Yes. Two meetings in a row does not work. We've tried it before, and it was terrible.
6:00 PM, and then we're going to prepare our thoughts on this as well.
Right, so come prepared to have a list of what you think our goals should be and what the town manager's goals should be. Obviously, they should be connected in some way, and then we will compile it all. Going back to what I was asking, one benefit of doing it sort of in two steps is that we can compile it and save time for that workshop, but.
So I have a question.
Sure.
We did this last year, you know, my first year on the board, different, we didn't set town manager goals. I know we had, we had a weird year.
Yeah.
We set goals for ourselves, it took us time, we did get there.
We did in the fall, right?
Yeah, but we didn't really set goals for Carter.
No, but you did, you wouldn't, but, yeah, but you set goals in the fall with Carter, right?
Well, one of our goals was to evaluate the goal-setting process, which we haven't done, which we talked about revising this. Obviously, we don't want to not have goals. So maybe at least for, we have one meeting before that meeting, maybe we can at least pull some prior examples of what they look like, because I've never set town manager goals.
Oh, sure, yeah, we can do that.
So I'm just not really familiar with how they look.
How town manager goals.
Maybe we can still have this as an agenda item to start talking about, you know,